Good morning and welcome to a special meeting of the Milton Select Board on December 28th, 2023. We are here this morning because a week ago, Monday on December 18th, the Select Board received petitions with respect to Article One of the town meeting. And pursuant to our Charter of Chapter C, Section 7, our board must meet within 14 days of the filing of such a petition to call a special town meeting. Now, the 14th day after the filing is Monday, January 1st. We received certified petitions last night, so that narrowed us down to two weekdays, either today or tomorrow to meet, and this was the most convenient time for the members. So I want to thank all the members, town staff, certainly Sue Galvin, our town clerk, and Peter Mello for meeting on short notice and during the holiday season. With that, we have as item two, public comment. We don't typically have a public comment during our special meetings, but one member, Mr. Zoll, requested that we have special comment, and so we put it on the agenda. During special comment, special comment, we allot 21 minutes for special comments, three minutes per speaker, and I will go in order by which the hands are raised by the attendees in the Zoom participant designation. And I will calculate the three minutes per speaker. Mr. Milano will calculate the 21 minutes. We are remote today, so we'll do our best to coordinate. I will let each speaker know when they are at two and a half minutes, and then I will ask them to conclude at the end of three minutes so we can move to the next speaker. All right, anything on that, Mr. Milano? Are we all set for public comment?
Mr. Chair, I just note that Mrs. DiTullio Agostino did reach out before the meeting requesting an opportunity to speak during public comment.
Well, I see that her hand is number one, so we're going to go to her, number one, because her hand is raised first in order, and then we'll go down the list. So let's start with Ms. DiTullio Agostino for three minutes for public comment. Please give your name and address, and then begin. I think you're still on mute, Diane.
Sorry, sorry, I think I hit the wrong button and became a panelist, but thank you very much for this opportunity because three important questions came to my attention, actually came to mind this morning. So if you could please take note and address them either today or in the next few weeks. The three reasonable accommodations ADA requests related to the petition and voting are: Can the Select Board or the town clerk provide extended hours to what's noted in our Charter? And bylaws has voting being available only from 2:30 to 8:00 p.m.? You might already know the answer to that. Two, please advise how mail-in voting and early voting are affected. That definitely will impact some with different disabilities. Three, has Milton had the required hearing to opt in or opt out of the new Votes Act? If not, does that commit Milton to allow early voting for this petition? Should it go forward, but prohibit mail-in voting on the next muni election? Those are the three ADA reasonable accommodation requests that would assist people in being able to vote during the daylight hours more because some people can't drive. We once had a townwide meeting where it was brought to our attention. We do have quite a few individuals who have impaired vision in Milton. And I would just add one other note. I recently read, and I believe the town council could address this, that attendees in Zoom meetings must be visible and cannot be there. So they have to be visible, if you could just have that addressed. And thank you so much for this meeting, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Agostino.
If I hit leave, that doesn't make me leave your Zoom, does it?
I'll take care of moving back to the event.
Yeah, don't hit leave because that may make you leave, but Nick will take you out as a panelist, so don't hit leave.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, all right. Elizabeth Dillon is next on the list, Ms. Dillon. I think you're on mute, Ms. Dillon.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. My name is Elizabeth Dillon. I live at 79 Governors Road. I'm a town meeting member for Precinct 6. I'm on the board of the East Milton Neighborhood Association, and I'm the co-chair of the Yes for Milton Committee. Today I come to you, however, as a concerned citizen and co-chair of the Yes for Milton Campaign. As many of you know, like many in town meeting, I'm an attorney. And like all attorneys, I swore to uphold an oath. I took an oath to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I take that oath very seriously. And as a town meeting member for Precinct 6 and a board member of the East Milton Neighborhood Association, I promise to put the interests of East Milton and Precinct 6 first, and I take that promise very seriously as well. You have before you a petition to relitigate Article 1, which was passed with a majority of town meeting, two-thirds of town meeting, after a year of consideration and almost to the day, three years after the law was passed with bipartisan support and signed by Governor Charlie Baker. This petition to relitigate the article comes with extreme consequences. In just four days, we will be officially in violation of the Commonwealth's law, and we will be alone in our violation. Every single other rapid transit community has voted yes to comply with the law. By voting no, by voting to violate the law, we will not only stand exposed and alone before the governor and the attorney general, clothed in nothing more than, as the warrant committee stated in its recommendation to town meeting, a mere hope that we will not be persecuted for our brazen violation, but we will also lose out on significant funds that the town needs. And not just grants set forth in the statute, but also, as stated by Governor Keeley, funds for schools, roads, including traffic mitigation, which we so desperately need, and for MBTA improvements, including ramps and elevators, to ensure ADA compliance. The governor and the attorney general have spoken, and I for one am not willing to put the town's future on the line for a hope that we are not targeted when we are the sole community violating the law. I understand my fellow East Miltoners who are concerned about change, increased traffic in our already overlaid in streets, increased parking issues, and the morass that is East Milton Square. I get it. I am concerned about nothing more than the well-being of the 60 children. Thank you to the 60 children on my street who have to worry on a day-to-day basis about the cars on their street, violating the law repeatedly, speeding, acting aggressively, and I will not be among the law violators that violate the laws of the Commonwealth. A way to fix the problems in East Milton Square is to accept the state's money, which we have done. A way to fix overcrowding in the schools is to accept state funds, which we have done.
Thank you, Ms. Dillon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, apologize if I have to stop people. We have to be pretty strict in our adherence to the time limit so that everyone's treated fairly. So let's go next to Mr. Marong, if I hope I pronounced it correctly.
All right, you pronounced it correctly, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you loud and clear, please go ahead.
Okay, my name is Matt Marong. I live at 136 Elliot Street. Good morning. I'm here to discuss my support for the passage of Article 1 from the December 2023 town meeting for a second time. In response to the recent petition drive to open this warrant article to all registered voters in the town, a group of like-minded citizens have formed a ballot question committee, Yes for Milton, which I am co-chairing with Elizabeth Dillon, who just spoke. It is our task to ensure that the residents of Milton are properly informed about why this measure gathered two-thirds support at town meeting. It is our expectation that, as the electorate is educated about the substance of this article and the process that led to its development, the townwide vote will achieve similar successful results. This article has been a long time coming. The resulting article contains the effort of many hands that had a role in its creation, a collaboration of innumerable hours of hard work by the Select Board, Planning Board, the Department of Planning and Community Development, citizens, and consultants. Members of the Planning Board who oppose this article and their comments to the warrant committee and on other occasions have promised that they will get to work on an alternate article with the goal of a vote at this spring's town meeting. That was their position, that they just need more time to put their nose down at the map and carve up a new, better plan. Well, the warrant for this upcoming spring town meeting closes on Wednesday, January 17th at 5:00 p.m. At present, there has been no notice of any planning board meeting since town meeting adjourned, no notice of a public forum, no notice of a public hearing, and no alternate ideas that have been shared with the public. I urge the citizens of Milton to recognize that the article that they will presumably have the opportunity to vote on is good public policy created through a transparent, open process. For those that oppose elements of it, passing the article despite these misgivings gives Milton an opportunity to remain compliant with state law as we refine our zoning to better serve the people of this town. The issues that this planning process has drawn a spotlight to deserve attention, and a no vote will not solve them. We stand ready to work with the planning board and any residents to work to make this article even better in the future. The MBTA zoning law recognizes a need that Milton zoning enacted in 1938 responded to a very different Milton and a very different region from what exists today. It is time for us to recognize that the way we have lived has changed since that time, and our zoning should reflect it. It's a chance to build on what we love about this town and help.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Marong.
Thank you. It's a chance to build on what we love about this town and help it meet some of the pressing needs of Milton and our region. It is time for Milton to join the other 11, 12 rapid transit communities that have risen to the task and passed zoning compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. I urge you to vote yes for Milton, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marong. Next, we have John Cahane. Mr. Cahane, if you can promote Mr. Cahane. Sir, if you unmute yourself, please, then we can hear you.
Unmute, there we go, am I here?
There you go, loud and clear, please proceed.
I am in support of the ballot initiative, and I'll keep it brief. As proposed, the plan as proposed, in everybody's own words, will not change. Things will not change, that was the wholesale speech, things will not change. So we won't provide the affordable housing, climate-friendly, affordable housing that this act was designed to do. And that is my whole reason for this ballot initiative because I realize it puts Milton at risk, but I think I'd be proud if we could stand out as the ones who fix this so it actually does provide climate-friendly, affordable housing. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Cahane. All right, I'm going to give people just a moment longer to put up their hands. Mr. Milano, what is it for the people who called in? Is it star six?
Nine.
Star nine, I always get that wrong. For those who called in, if you press star nine, then your hand will be raised, and we can recognize you if you want to participate in public comment. So we'll give those who have joined by, oh, we do have another hand up. So let's go to Cindy Christensen. Let's promote Cindy Christensen, please. If you can unmute yourself and give your name and address.
I won't need the timer because what I want to say is that I'm in favor of fairness and justice, and what this board put together and put out to town meeting is neither fair nor just. The multifamily housing should be spread out to each of your neighborhoods just as much as you've spread it out to Precinct 7. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we do have another hand up. It looks like Tom, let me just stop my timer, reset it, all right. Mr. Callahan, could you promote Tom Callahan, please? Callahan, if you unmute yourself and you can state your name and address, you can go ahead.
Great, thank you, Chair Zulus. Tom Callahan, 16 Orano Streets, Precinct 4. I wanted to just talk a little bit about the election. And I'm also with Matt and Elizabeth, part of the Yes for Milton effort, the campaign committee that formed to encourage town residents to vote yes. And I understand that today you'll be talking about and possibly even setting a date for this election, and also maybe some of the rules of the election. I'm not a lawyer, so I'm going to say that right up front, and I understand that the law is a little murky on these special elections or special town meeting. I guess that is what is officially called. But I wanted to just encourage the Select Board to err on the side of giving more access and more time for voters to consider this question. It's, as town meeting members know, and I'm a town meeting member, many of us attended lots of planning board hearings, lots of planning department staff presentations, spent numerous hours, and now voters throughout town will have to dive into the details in I think a few more days or weeks if we can get it. And also liberalized voting hours, early mail-in voting, all of those things, I think, to encourage more town residents to vote rather than fewer, I think would be in the interest of democracy here. So hopefully, we can educate voters to vote yes on this, but we want to be on the side of encouraging all of the town's residents to get themselves to the polls to vote on this important issue. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. Mr. Milano, how are we doing on the overall 21 minutes?
I have eight minutes and 50 seconds remaining.
All right, plenty of time for Mr. D'Amato, so if you can promote Mr. D'Amato, please.
He's coming now.
All right. Andy, if you unmute yourself and just give your name and address?
Sure, Andy D'Amato, 26 Pear Street, town meeting member, Precinct 7, and a member of the East Milton Neighborhood Association. Just, I guess, a little confused on all the, you know, the reaction here. This is part of our Charter for town meetings. So when people talk about the sanctity of the vote at town meeting, this is a vehicle, if I'm not mistaken, to allow all the residents, you know, to challenge the vote. And it seems to me it's legal, and we should just let the process play out at this point. And as far as, you know, breaking the law, not upholding the law, this is a legal mechanism in which we're using. So this country was founded on, you know, challenging authority from the, you know, Boston Tea Party to filibusters in Congress and impeachment hearings to change, you know, what is perceived to be a mistake by the legislature. I just want to be clear that I think we should let the process play itself out, have this special vote, and live with the results, and that's it. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Andy. All right, I don't see any further hands up, but let's give people a minute. Remember, Nick, what is it again, star six or star nine? I'm going to, I remember the block on that.
Nine.
For the phones, it's star nine in order to raise your hands. So a star nine for the phones, if you want to raise your hand and participate. Oh, there we go, Mr. Cahane is back. And so we don't typically allow, but Mr. Cahane had a very short time. So Mr. Cahane, well, let's promote him very quickly because he did cut his time short. So he maybe just remembered something, and so I don't remember. I think, Mr. Cahane, we don't usually have people come back. I think your time was short, so why don't we give you up to maybe a minute and a half?
I need 10 seconds, I forgot to introduce myself. I forgot to introduce, but I'm new to this. John Cahane, town meeting member, Precinct 7. I live on Antwerp Street, and I'm also on the East Milton Neighborhood Association Board. Thank you very much.
Great, I'm glad you added that, John, thank you very much. That's great, that's great, that's great. All right, anyone else for public comment? Oh, we do have someone, and this is someone with the name Mark. So if you could promote Mark, and if Mark could give his full name and address, and then you'll have up to three minutes, and I will give you a notice of two and a half minutes. So if you can unmute yourself, Mark, give your name and address, and then you'll have up to three minutes, and I'll give you an indication of two minutes and 30 seconds.
Yep, I just unmuted myself, can you hear me?
I can, loud and clear, go ahead.
Thank you for having me, I won't take three minutes, nor did I expect to speak, but my name's Mark Croninger, I'm in Precinct 7 on Melbourne Road. Good morning, everybody, I hope you had great holidays. I wanted to just echo the comments somebody made previously about the fact that we should, that nobody wants to break the law, and yet that's how bad decisions get rectified. So this was a really bad decision by the legislature to call us a high-speed transit town based on the dilapidated Mattapan Trolley and the minimal bus service. Somebody mentioned before that, that, you know, other towns have not voted to be in violation, but several towns that are much more MBTA-driven than Milton is, including Arlington, Belmont, et cetera. I lived in those areas, those are T-towns. This is not a T-town. Last night, I walked from the DPW yard to the Mattapan Trolley just to see what an easy little stroll that would be to get on that if you actually needed to use it. It's about a mile, you have to walk through two on- and off-ramps over 93, and nobody in their right mind is going to consider that being a T. The bus service around here is minimal. East Milton Square is a, I've lived here for 26 years, is an outright disaster right now. And for anybody who doesn't use it regularly, come spend a couple of days in East Milton Square and try to get off a granite abber's quantum in the morning. This needs to be rectified. A gentleman earlier said that we should have this spread out across the rest of the town to mitigate the impact of East Milton Square. I think anybody would be in agreement with that. Okay, so that, I really feel like East Milton Square and the east side of town is left holding the bag on it, and it's easier for people who aren't in that part of town to vote to let us hold the bag, and I don't think it's fair. And when things aren't fair, you need to speak out and resist as opposed to rolling over. That's my opinion. Thank you very much, I do appreciate the efforts that you've all been making in the meetings, but this is not fair to the east part of town, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Croninger. All right, Mr. Milano, how much more time do we have on the 21 minutes?
Five minutes.
Oh, okay, plenty of time. Well, if someone chooses to use it, not that we're advocating for it. All right, we do have someone, Mr. Asher. Oh, now he's gone. Let's give people a minute more to raise their hands if they wish. Again, on the phones, it's star nine. Is that right? Okay, star nine. If you're on the phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and if you're on the Zoom, just use the raise your hand function, and we'll recognize you for public comment. And I see Susanna Haggerty, if you could promote Ms. Haggerty, and if you could just give your name and address, and you'll have up to three minutes, and I'll let you know when you have 30 seconds to go. You could promote Ms. Haggerty.
No reaction yet, hang on.
Oh.
There we go.
Okay. Ms. Haggerty, if you could unmute yourself and give your name and address, and then you'll have up to three.
I apologize, I haven't done one of these panelists meetings before, so it's a new Zoom function for me.
No worries, we're all finding our way through this, so go ahead, take your time.
I'm Susanna Haggerty, I live at 1066 Hillside Street. I always get my precincts wrong, it's either nine or five. Every time I go into the high school, they have to remind me to vote. And like the previous commenter, I did not come on here planning to comment, so I don't have like a little prepared speech to read. And I have also not been active in this campaign and this issue, so I do not have the expertise of some of the previous commentators. I just want to, I just want to point out, I also don't live in East Milton, so I don't have to spend a lot of time negotiating the horror that is the traffic over there, but every time I do, I'm just blown away that people have to live under these circumstances, and I cannot imagine trying to insert high volume of additional residents into that already overtaxed area of town. So that's the practical piece, but really what I wanted to say is, I really object to the characterization of holding a vote on this as somehow endangering funds that come to the town of Milton. This characterization is really a scare tactic designed to prevent people from utilizing the full democratic process and allowing the full town membership to vote. I recognize the town meeting has voted on the issue, I recognize that's a democratic process. I just struggle to understand the resistance of some folks in opening up that process to include everybody in town. If people want to vote on it, I don't really understand why some people are so reluctant to allow that to happen. If the full town votes on this and the full town disagrees with my opinion and wants to bring a bunch more people into Milton, you know, I would accept that as the will of the town, that's the democratic process. But I think when people are out there saying that if we vote on this, we're going to lose money, and our schools are going to go broke, and our roads are going to crumble. And I think that's really an attempt to intimidate people from not participating in the democratic process, and I find that really concerning as a citizen. So, you know, I urge, you know, this body to recognize that the will of the people who have signed this petition in effort to encourage further discussion and a full townwide vote, and to allow that process to go forward, and, you know, for all of us to live with the results and respect the opinions of our fellow townspeople. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haggerty, that was an impressive extemporaneous effort, and I look forward to hearing sometime when you write it down because that was really good for not writing anything down. All right, I think we have, do we have more time, Mr. Milano?
I have two minutes.
Two minutes, all right, so we'll go to Margaret, who's next on the list. And Margaret, please, Pearl Margaret, and Margaret, if you could give your name and address, and you'll have two minutes because we're running on time. Up to two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, if you could give your name and address, and you'll have up to two minutes.
Okay, Margaret Vaughn, 600 Canton Avenue. I came to Milton in 1943, and I moved out in 1963 to a local town to bring up the children. I'm back here in about five or six years, but I've been connected to Milton all those years. What I would like, and this is extemporaneously also, I would like all of the citizens of this town be considered, period. I just don't feel connected to this town whatsoever, and I don't think it's a new style. I think it's kind of always been there, but not as impactful as now. But I feel like we are totally disconnected from what's really going on. I understand laws, blah, blah, but I do not understand that the people of this town are not first and foremost in your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marong. All right, Mr. Milano, do we have one more minute that we could offer to someone, or?
That's what I count too.
All right, so we have one more minute. And I saw, so Mr. Wilkinson's hand went up, then it went down, and Mr. Gregorio went in front of Mr. Wilkinson. So I think we'll have to go with Mr. Gregorio because that was the rules. So, Mr. Wilson. Uh, Mr. Wilkinson, I apologize, I, because your hand went down for a while, so, if we could promote Mr. Gregorio to wrap us up for our last minute here. If you could, uh, unmute yourself and, and give your name and address, and then you'll have, uh, you'll have a minute, Mr. Gregorio, because we just have a minute left.
Oh, hey, how you doing?
Very well.
Hold on, I'm a, I think I'm a boomer, cuz I don't know how to use this thing.
Just give your name and address, and off you go.
I'm, uh, Ian Gregorio, and I live at forty-one Hawthorne Road, and I just wanted to, uh, just, I appreciate all the select board and everybody that came this morning to, uh, chime in here, and I just appreciate everybody participating in this process, whatever the outcome is. That's it, that's all, just I appreciate everybody in town. Thank you so much.
All right, well, uh, so I think we have forty-five seconds, forty-five seconds that we could offer to, and a- and, and again, I have, Mr. Wilkinson put his hand down, and then, uh, a, a KJ got in front of Mr. Wilkinson, so again, uh, we'll have to, we'll have to, uh, with apologies to Mr. Wilkinson, um, uh, we'll have to, we'll go next to KJ, and if KJ could give their name and address, and, uh, and, um, and, uh, take the last forty-five seconds. You could give your name and address, and then, uh, you'll have up to forty-five seconds. Uh, first unmute yourself, KJ. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Um, this is Kristen Joyce from Cortland Circle. Um, I, I think, I, I mean, a lot of people have said a lot of things that, um, I, I would echo. But I think the thing that is, um, most difficult for us over here is obviously the volume. Um, but that it doesn't seem like this area, um, in the plan is handled in the same way that the MBTA region is, and, and just for an example, the, um, the multifamily buy right. It seems like if this area had that, um, and then also the aesthetics, the, you know, maintaining the height that's in, in this area, that you would have family, et cetera, there wouldn't be a need to put seven hundred units in that lot, or two hundred over, um, at two granite or up at the, up at the square, so it just, to, to me and to our neighbors, it just, uh, it feels very inequitable, and, um, and, and the burden on East Milton is just that far too large.
Thank you, Ms. Joyce, thank you, Ms. Joyce. All right, uh, I think we've exhausted our twenty-one minutes, is that right, Mr. Malana?
Yes.
Great, thank you, everyone, uh, and Mr. Wilkinson, uh, uh, you went in and out, and so, but, uh, but we'll, we'll certainly have, uh, citizen or public comment at our next meeting on, uh, currently scheduled is January ninth, I believe, so, uh, so you're certainly, uh, welcome to, to join us then, and we'll have, uh, another, uh, section of public comment. All right, moving on to item three, discussion approval. Petition requesting Article One approved at the December fourth, two thousand twenty-three special town meeting be submitted to the voters of the town at large, and the date for special town meeting in accordance with Section seven of the Town and Milton Charter. Um, last night, uh, or last evening, we received, uh, from our, our town clerk, uh, Ms. Galvin, uh, a, a certification, uh, for a petition, uh, certifying, um, uh, more than five percent of the registered voters, certifying two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven signatures, uh, and that was signed by, um, Ms. Galvin and the other members of the clerk's office, and I wanna just turn to, uh, Ms. Galvin to see if, uh, she has, uh, anything further to add, and then we'll go to Mr. Mello, uh, to give us, uh, the outlines of what, what we need to do here today. So, Sue, if you, if you have anything to add, please, please, please help me out.
Absolutely, first of all, thank you for having me and including me in this, um, important discussion. Um, if, if it's okay with you folks, I would like to address Ms. Agostino's, um, questions regarding um, mail-in voting and, um, voting in person. Um, so, I believe Ms. Agostino asked about, um, mail-in voting, so that is a permanent fixture of all elections um, that there, the town does not opt in or opt out, we offer that for every state, federal, and local election. Um, on the town clerk's website, there's instructions as to how to apply for one. Um, and it's pretty simple, you can either fill out an application and/or s- simply submit in a letter signed, um, indicating your interest. Um, we do have a very busy election season, um, with three state and federal elections. Um, in addition to our local town election in April, uh, the Secretary of State's office will be sending out cards um, to all registered voters in the Commonwealth, um, for their convenience, allowing them to, um, request, um, vote-by-mail ballots for individual elections or all elections. Uh, that should be going out sometime during the week of January eighth or ninth, um, I believe. Um, in terms of voting in person, so the, um, town is required for all state and federal elections to offer vote in person, um, and there is a, a schedule that will be available on our website. Uh, for town elections, uh, if the Board of Registrazes uh, present to the selectmen a request for, um, having vote in person available, uh, then the select board could consider whether or not that would be offered. That's new to the Votes Act, and the prior town election of two thousand twenty-three, we did not, um, come to the Select Board, the Board of Registered, did not ask the, um, Select Board to consider doing so. Um, historically, that has not been a, um, big avenue for, um, our local elections. Um, hence, that was the reasoning behind not asking for that. I, I believe that should, and if, if you folks have any questions regarding that, I'd be more than happy to answer that. Um, or if you feel that I didn't answer Ms. Agostino's questions regarding that, please feel free to interrupt me. In terms of, um, I would like to request that the, uh, Select Board, when considering running the election, um, that we do take into fact that the, um, Town Charter, Section Seven does indicate hours of, um, being open to, to eight P.M. Um, I believe that we should offer our voters the exact same timeframe that we historically do um, offer our town elections, as well as our state and federal, those hours are seven A.M. to eight P.M. Um, I have spoken with Town Council, um, as well as the, um, Director of Elections for, um, the State, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. There is a section in the General Law, um, Chapter fifty-four, Section sixty-four, that states the selectmen in any town may provide the hours during which the polls shall be open for the purpose of voting on a question to be submitted to the voters of said town, and shall be the same hours designated by said selectmen for the election of town officers. Um, in speaking with Town Council and, um, the Director of Elections of the State, um, we may wanna consider and go a little further in asking Town Council to, um, petition the courts to extend those hours, just to cover all bases that, um, we, we would be, um, following the, the letter of law. For right now, I think that, that is all I have to say, and, um, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sue, very helpful. Um, uh, why don't we next go to Town Council, Peter Mellow, Mellow, and then open it up for comments or questions of the members? So, Mr. Mellow, if you could weigh in on, uh, on what we, what we need to decide here. Uh, Mr. Malana, do you wanna go before Mr. Mellow?
I, I just, Mr. Chair, I think, um, one other item that I, if you want to discuss later, is the date of the election, I don't know if you wanted to hear from the town clerk, her recommendation on a date now, or wait till, um, later.
It's up to, up to the town clerk. Sue, do you wanna, do you wanna make a recommendation now or later?
Um, certainly, um, I would recommend, there's two potential dates, um, one would be February sixth. Um, hang on one second, I just wanna get my papers in line, so that I'm saying the exact correct date. Um, but yes, February sixth, it is a Tuesday, um, typically, all of our elections are held on a Tuesday, so, um, again, I would like to, um, keep with consistency as to not confuse any of our voters, and, um, to allow them the opportunity to vote. Um, so, February sixth, or, um, February thirteen. Uh, those are the two, um, dates that I think would be, um, most advisable. I do have the, or the, the town does, the state does, has the presidential primary on March fifth, so, um, it's a little tight, but, um, I think either one of those dates sh- should work.
Great. Thank you, Sue, thank you, Mr. Malana. Let's go to Mr. Mello, and then we'll open it up for comments or questions of the members. Mr. Mello?
Thank you, uh, Chair Zulis, and, um, uh, nice to see everyone, I hope everyone had a, a, or just enjoying a, a great holiday season. Um, so, the process is laid out in, um, Section seven of the Town Charter. As you might expect, it, the language in that section doesn't address, um, some particulars normally associated with like a statewide election, for example, um, it, you know, there are some questions um, in moving parts that I think it would be appropriate and prudent to, um, vet a little bit with the Elections Division, and we're in the process of that. Um, and, you know, with holiday scheduling and the like, um, some of those, you know, there's a um, there might be a, a, a timeframe, um, that we'll be working with the Elections Division's, uh, uh, staff on some of these particulars, but I think that the, the most important thing for the boards to do, um, for purposes of, of today's meeting is just to establish a date between the two dates proposed by the clerk, I think that the thirteenth makes um, a little more sense, insofar as it allows a little additional time to iron i- iron out some of the questions that um, that folks have posed with respect to, um, uh, logistics and, and all that, so. Um, but I think it's, for today's purposes, not to oversimplify it, but it's pretty straightforward, I think the, the board just needs to set a date. Um, to the extent that Section seven contemplates that this is part of a special town meeting process, I think, um, a warrant ultimately wo- would be issued, you know, barring anything, um, any other information or any other thoughts that emerge, um, in our discussions with the Elections Division. Um, but we don't have to, I don't think, um, formulate the language for the warrant tonight, or the, or today, rather, or, you know, vote on the contents of a warrant explicitly, um, that I think can be reserved for a future meeting, but I think a, a date should be set um, by the board today.
Thank you, Mr. Mello. Comments or questions from the members? Anything? Going once, going twice? Mr. Wells? And then Ms. Galvin, this, uh, Richard, do you want Sue to weigh in first, or do you wanna?
Yeah, no, I was, yeah, I was, I was just gonna ask him, says, do you want a motion? I just, I know we have to pick a date, I I'm ready to do it, but I'll, I'll wait till, uh, till Madam Clerk weighs in first.
Sue, do you have something else to, um, suggest here?
Um, I just wanted to state that, um, in order for the ballots and everything to be printed, um, we will need a question pretty soon. Um, I'm looking at, at the very latest, um, would be somewhere around January fourth, um, that a, a question would need to get to me in order to be able to get it to the printer, return it, have enough time to get it back to us, mail it out to the voters that so choose to do the mailings. Um, it is very time-sensitive as far as, um, making sure that everything, um, goes. And so the Ju- January fourth would allow for a February thirteen. Um, a January second would allow for a February sixth.
Thank you, thank you, Sue, that's, uh, that's very helpful. So, I have a proposed motion, uh, from, uh, Town Council uh, that we would move to schedule a special town meeting election in accordance with Section seven of the Town Charter to be held on February, let's say, February thirteenth, and that the language appearing on the ballot for such election shall be stated in substantially the same form as the motion presented in town meeting on December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three to approve Article One, provided that the town administrator shall be authorized to determine the final ballot language in consultation with the Elections Division and Secretary of the Commonwealth. So that's, that's a proposed motion that I think Sue will get us to the point today, so you could have language by the fourth. If, if that's the motion that the, uh, the board, uh, the board goes ahead and, and votes on. Does that work, Sue, do you think?
That does work, um, and I would think that we'd need to make a decision as to the hours at some, whether this meeting or, um, by the fourth as well.
Okay. Oh, that's right, cuz I'll need to be on the, on the warrant, right? Right, right, all right, Mr. Wells?
So, Mr. Chair, if that's, if that's okay, I will, I will, um, verbatim, with one friendly memo, with, uh, with one amendment to it, um, verbatim, I'll make that motion, you just read it. With the date to be February thirteenth, and my only addition to that would be to allow the Town Council to continue discussions, um, to whatever we have to do to move forward, I don't think we have to vote that today. If it involves petition the court to, um, my intention would be to mirror the normal voting hours for normal elections as we would have every other election in town, if.
So, so you'd wanna add, you'd wanna add the, uh, the, for, uh, for, uh, with the election to in, to be conducted between the hours of seven A.M. and eight P.M.
That'll work, that's perfect, that'll work.
I would second that.
Okay, um, all right, so we have, I don't know who came first, I think it was Mr. Zoll, but, um, um, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded, the motion, and I'll read it again, uh, from Mr. Wells, uh, move that the board schedule a special town meeting election in accordance with Section seven of the Town Charter to be held on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and that the language appearing in the ballot for such election shall be stated in substantially the same form as the motion presented at town meeting on December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three to approve Art- to approve Article One, provided that the town administrator shall be authorized to determine the final ballot language in consultation with the Elections Division and the Secretary of the Commonwealth, and that the election hours sho- the election shall be conducted during the hours of seven A.M. to eight P.M. And that motion's been made and seconded, uh, now.
Chair Zoll, I, I guess, uh, um, I don't know if it, it may make sense to add language to that, um, contemplating or authorizing us to commence, um, a court proceeding if, if deemed necessary to, y- you know, to, um, gain authorization to expand the, the polling hours, if it's, if it's determined that that's necessary.
All right, let, let me, let me make a suggestion, now, now the motion's getting a little bit, little bit unwieldy, can we break it into two? Um, and, and we'll take the election hours piece separate. Um, and so the first motion, if, Mr. Wells, if you'll accept
I'm fine with that, absolutely.
Without the election hours.
I'm also fine as secondary.
Okay, so, so the, the motion has been made and seconded, uh, strictly with respect to the ballot language, not including the election hours. We'll take that up in a subsequent motion. So, uh, comments or questions on the, um, uh, or discussion with respect to the motion on the, on the floor?
Let's vote.
Seeing none, um, uh, all those in favor, this will be a roll call vote. Um, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll is yes, okay, so we have our election, uh, is gonna be on, uh, the, uh, led, election scheduled for February thirteenth, and the language will be, um, in the same form, substantially the fit same form as the motion presented at town meeting, which is as is provided in the Charter, and the Town Council will work, that work, or Town Administrator will work on the final ballot language in consultation with the Elections Division of the Secretary of the Commonwealth. Um, so now, uh, if we want, we can take up a secondary motion. Of the Secretary of the Commonwealth. Um, so now, uh, if we want, we can take up a secondary motion. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess I'm confused as to why we would change what's in the charter, since everybody that's spoken today. Um, is referencing the charter and the laws that go around the charter. So why is it that we would be, A, petitioning the court to extend the hours that are already outlined in the charter? And there's already direction in the charter for what we should be doing for one of these elections. B, I'm wondering how much this is gonna cost us. The, um, article as written in the warrant is about thirty pages long. Is each ballot going to need to be thirty pages long? Um, because I'm very concerned as the Chair of the Finance Committee, what we're looking at here. In terms of printing costs, um, if we have to print thousands of ballots that are thirty pages each. I'm just wondering if anybody's done some math on that. So those are my two questions. Thank you so much.
Right, so, um, why don't we take the, uh, the second question first, which is the, the question on the ballot? And, uh, let, let's go to, yeah, Mr. Milano, uh, Mr. Mello and Ms. Galvin, if they wanna weigh in on the question of the. The, the form and the cost of the ballot.
So just to, um, clarify, the, what the ballot question will be is the motion that Mr. Zulis made at town meeting, um, and substantially in that form. Uh, we will certainly have the language of Article One available, and we plan to have that both at the town clerk's office, um, obviously. And then at each polling location. So if folks are interested in reviewing the full article, they'll have the access to that. Each ballot will not print the full, uh, multi-page article. It'll, it'll be strictly, um, the motion as made at town meeting. So it'll, it'll still be a short ballot, uh, but we'll make and ensure that there are plenty of copies of Article One available if folks, uh, wanna, uh. Review it, um, at the time that they are voting. And in terms of top, um, I, I believe the annual town election last year was, um, oh. Over four, about forty-five, forty-six thousand dollars. So I think that's what we typically look at. Um, or to run an election with vote by mail, um, for a full day of voting, uh, if Sue, if I have that right.
That's correct, and I, I honestly do not think that the cost would change if, if the hours were, uh. Two to eight versus, I mean, it might, it would be insignificant, the cost.
All right, i- is that, uh, sufficient on the, the question of the ballot and the cost, Ms. Bradley?
Y- yes, can I ask a follow-up question? I believe I've talked to Mr. Milano about this. But, um, Mr. Milano, this would come from the general fund and we would just make a transfer. Is that correct? So we have to have a finance committee meeting. Is that correct?
The, the clerk's office budget for this year did not account for, obviously, the selection. So, um, currently that this cost is not funded, um, in the town clerk's budget. So we would certainly need a reserve fund transfer and appropriations transfer to, um, fund the costs, um, prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, anything else on the, the ballot and the cost? Uh, the next issue that Ms. Bradley raised was the hours, uh, comments, questions. And then, and then the question of whether, whether we wanna make a motion to establish, uh, certain hours, whether those are. In, in accordance with section seven, whether there's something different and whether, what, what the, what means we may have to extend the hours if we wish to do so. Mr. Zoll?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, on, on this, uh, particular issue. Uh, I do feel compelled to speak because I feel like we're, we're getting a kind of a, uh, pick and choose from the town charter about which laws we wanna use. And how we wanna use them. So if we were following the charter exactly, we would have limited voting hours and we would have forty-page ballots. And, uh, I can, I, 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 I think certainly anybody, you know, who has a chance to think about that thinks that that's not probably the right solution. Uh, when you have an election. Um, I, I do, you know, I think, uh, there, there's the larger question of. Should a town have an election if the result of the election, uh, ensures that the town is breaking state law? Um, you know, on that, the bylaws are quiet because I'm sure nobody thought at the time they were drafting the bylaws. That, uh, that such a question would ever be posed. Um, and I, I am curious to get the input of the town council on that particular question. Um, I, I feel that, uh, if folks wanna vote on something, they should vote on it. I, I feel like we should be clear about what the costs are. It's not scaremongering to talk about what the enumerated, uh, costs of, of, of a no vote would look like. But I think, and I, I think certainly everybody should, if they want to weigh in and, and we're clear that this is costing the town dollars. That we don't really have to spend, uh, and it could cost the town lots of dollars, uh, if the vote, uh, goes in the, in the direction of the no. Um, without substantially changing the outcome of what's actually going to happen. Um, if Milton really feels like we wanna cede our control over zoning to. The courts and to outside developers, so be it. Uh, I think the longer process with longer voting hours and more opportunity for people to learn. Really about what's in this bill instead of what's been told to them in front of the fruit center and understand the consequences. I think the town will come to the same conclusion that town meeting came to, vote overwhelmingly in favor of following state law and keeping control of our own zoning decisions. Um, so I'm in favor of expanding the voting hours per, per Ms. Bradley's question about, uh, about why we're, we're picking and choosing. Uh, but I would like to hear from town council before we go all the way forward about the legality of actually having a ballot measure. That would, uh, put the town out of compliance state law. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Zoll. We'll go to Mr. Weller, but Ms. Galvin has her hand up. Sue, do you wanna weigh in before Mr. Mello answers that question?
Uh, I just wanna weigh in on, um, why we should have the voting hours, um, extended from the, the bylaw. Um, I feel like I would be remiss as the, um, chief election official. Uh, my job is to ensure that every voter has every opportunity to vote. And by, um, reducing the hours according to our charter, I feel that, um, we would not be allowing. Um, our voters every opportunity to vote in, in an election. So, I, that would be my reasoning.
Thank, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Galvin. Ms. Bradley, can we, uh, can we have Mr. Mello answer the question on, um. On including this, uh, as a ballot measure before you speak, or, or do you wanna?
Absolutely, as long as he includes how much this will cost to go to court and what the outcome looks like for that.
Okay, good, good ad. Mr. Mello?
All right, so.
First, Mr. Mr. Zoll's question and then, and then Ms. Bradley's as well.
Okay, so with respect to Mr. Zoll's question, I'm, I don't, not trying to, uh, be a vase, so I, I, I think that it's probably. My opinion on, um, the, the legality of, um. The re- of invoking the referendum process in this context, I think is probably best conveyed confidentially. Um, I'm just trying to think of all the. The, the angles to that. I think it's, if the, if the board wants my advice about, about that question, I'm happy to provide it. I think it probably is best conveyed in a, in a confidential. Um, correspondence, written correspondence, which I'm happy to provide. Um, the, and readily, by the way. Um, the, the second question about the cost, I, I think that, and I've done this in the past, in a totally different context. Um, I recall during COVID, there, there was a, a logistical question associated with the town meeting. Um, whereby, uh, a client town wanted to, for space reasons, wanted to have, um. Town meeting in, in a separate municipality and, and we were able to, um. Commence a, a, uh, basically a procedural court action that, that called upon the court to exa- exercise its, its broad equitable powers. To, um, issue an order that allowed the town to do that as legislation, um, to allow for that was pending. So I think that it's possible that we might be able to use the same sort of mechanism to, to confirm some logistical details. Um, more procedural items with respect to, to this, um, process. I think that, um, in terms of the cost of that, um. Temporarily, as I'm sitting here, um, I, I think we probably could streamline. You know, the preparation of the required court papers would be like a, a complaint. We need to have a motion. Um, for preliminary injunction along with a, a supporting memorandum. I'm thinking that could all be completed in probably twenty or thirty hours, so, um, you know, a few thousand dollars. We'd have a, a court hearing, um, in, you know. Probably virtually, um, but perhaps in person. Um, but that, that would be another few hours. So I, but I think everything. Um, depending on the exact scope of it, but if it were just confined to procedural items and logistics and the like. I think it would probably be somewhere in the order of, you know, twenty, thirty hours of, uh, of legal work at a, a couple, a few thousand dollars.
So, Ms. Mellow, if I may, um, uh, so i- is it your view that in order to extend the hours from. The two to eight as provided in the charter to our normal seven AM to eight PM, will that be a, will, will, will that necessarily require court action?
I, I'm not sure I would say that unequivocally. Uh, it would be, I think. Um, perhaps the cleanest approach because we could, we could resolve all doubt. I, I know Sue mentioned, uh, chapter fifty-four, section sixty-four. And there is language that, uh, would seem to confer upon the select board, the unilateral authority to adjust the hours now. That statute, I don't think includes, um, language stating, you know, notwithstanding any general or special law. To the contrary, sometimes you see that in other statutory sections. So, so one might say, well. The legislature had it, had it intended this language to, uh, to override the terms of a, of a, um. Local charter, it would have included that sort of disclaimer in there. Um, although I, I could see an argument in the other direction, but I, I think it, like I said, of, of maybe a court proceeding would be the most. Prudent or the cleanest approach because, um, it would resolve any question about that.
But it, but it's fair, is it fair to say, uh, Mr. Mello, that we do have, based on that statute. Some statutory basis for setting the seven AM to eight PM, regardless of what the charter states?
Um, I, I think that's fair to say, um, but, uh, uh, again, I think that the, the absence in that statute of language. That I just described to the effect that, you know, this, this entitlement, um. E- exists notwithstanding any contrary terms of any general or special law, um, I. You know, I, I think it's, it would be reasonable to take a, a, a different view and my, um. This is one of those questions that I'd like to iron out, um, specifically with the Elections Division because I'm not, based on my. Initial conversations with that office, um, I'm not sure that they would, that they would agree. I just, I don't, I don't think we've pinned that down. Um, as precisely as, uh, as I would need to in order to, to give you a, a, an unequivocal response to that question.
Fair enough. Mr. Wells?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I just ask you, the, 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 I think, probably proven rest of direct turn counsel to do that and. To do it as expeditiously as, as possible, given the timeframe here, so that we have. An answer. I mean, with determine what the question is so that we can come up with an answer on what the hours will be. Um, for this election. I think, I think he's correct that. He's the one who's gonna find the answer, and I, I agree with both Mr. Zoll and with what Madam Clerk asked, um. I'd just like to get the answer sooner versus later so we can move this forward one way or another.
Uh, Ms. Musto?
Thank you. Um, I do think it's important to see what the answer would be to that, to, um, allow for the longer timeframe for people to vote. Seems like that's similar to how our usual town elections are, is we allow for that full day. So, um, I agree. I back all the previous speakers saying that we should investigate that and do that as soon as we can. Um, obviously, we have a short timeframe, so, um, and given the holiday and everything, we wanna make sure that, that gets going soon. Thank you.
Um, so, uh, i- 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 unless, uh, without objection, it sounds like, uh, there is a consensus among the board. To have the longer hours. Is a, a, any, any disagreement on that? So it sounds like there's a consensus among the board. To have the, the extended hours from seven AM, seven AM to eight PM. Um, and so, um, I guess, um, so let's take that first and then we'll take the. The issue above of legality, of, of legality of, uh, of putting a, um. On the ballot, something will violate the law. Um, uh, um. Uh, Mr. Mellow, I, I, i- is, is the best motion here a motion to authorize the town administrator? And the town, and town council to best effectuate, uh, extended voting hours, uh, from seven AM to eight PM? Um, for this election, something to that effect?
Yeah, and maybe with a, an additional, um. Line to the effect that, you know, including, um, authorization to, uh, commence, um. A, a court proceeding if deemed necessary.
All right, and, um, all right, so, um, so I'll make a motion, uh, to authori- authorize. Uh, the town administrator and the town clerk, working with the town clerk and town council, uh, to best effectuate, um. Uh, extended voting hours from seven AM to eight PM for this election. And, um, to authorize town council, if necessary, to seek court action to do so.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All right, this will be a roll call, oh, oh, sorry, roll call vote. Uh, I'm taking on my, uh, some of my coffee. This will be a roll call vote. Uh, all those in favor, this will be, um, uh, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
And Mr. Zoll is yes. All right, there was also a question about, um, and I believe Mr. Mello addressed it, but there was a. There was an issue about the, uh, the question of, um, the legality of including this, uh, as a referendum question. Have, have we, have we exhausted that, uh, that issue? Any further comment on that? I mean, I will say that, you know, I, you know, I, 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 I do believe this, this petition and this referendum is just about one thing. And that's whether or not to violate the law. It's really not about zoning because we've had one year of zoning process. We had zoning, we had no alternative to this zoning at town meeting. We have no alternatives for the next town meeting for zoning. So if this were about zoning, there would be an alternative zoning proposal. This is not about changing the law, some people suggested. This is not the process for changing or challenging the law. So this is not about zoning, this is not about changing or challenging the law. This is just about one thing, and that's about whether this town will, um, will violate the law or not. And, um, and, uh, and so, uh, having said that, um. Uh, this is the process, uh, and this is the, the process allows this. Uh, the select board, uh, does not have the authority, uh, not to, uh, put this on the ballot. The select board is mandated by, uh, section seven to put this on the ballot. If, uh, the petition has the required signatures, which this petition does. Um, but that doesn't change what the petition is, and that is a petition to violate the law. Um, and so, um, so, um, uh, any other, uh, comments or questions or, or motions on this? Ms. Bradley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two things. Um, one, even though there's no snow on the ground right now. I can recall back in February of twenty fifteen, there was a beyond blizzard. Um, we had feats and feats of snow. I am just curious to know what happens if, on February thirteenth, it's a state of emergency and nobody can leave their house. And there's snow everywhere. And I know this may sound drastic and crazy, but, you know, nobody thought this petition would be coming down the pike after two-thirds of town meeting. Vote in favor of it. So I just wanted to know what would happen, um. If we do end up like twenty fifteen and there was a snowmageddon, um, do we have to set a, a date? In case? I, I don't know. I mean, you guys were in charge of the town then. What, what happened at town hall? Did we shut down twenty fifteen? I don't know.
Well, I don't think any of us were in charge of the town except for, except for our clerk, so I think our clerk. I, I think our clerk has to give us the answer on what happens if there is a, uh, if there is a, a climate event, uh, for the election.
So the election g- goes on. Uh, yes, there would have to be, you know, some. Extraordinary circumstances, um, for it to be, be canceled or, or plus postponed. Um, so in my opinion, it would still.
So, so Sue, can I ask?
I'd be like the postman.
If the governor called a state of emergency, uh, and there was, obviously, in a state of emergency, you can't leave your homes. Or, or if he called, or she called us, uh, shelter in place, um, that would then not have, the election could not move forward at that point, correct?
As, as far as I know, um, it would take an act, um, and Peter might be able to answer that. Better than, or more equipped than I, um. As to how, how that would move forward, but, um, I know there have been storms in the past and elections have been carried through. and elections have been carried through during the tragedy of nine eleven. There was an election going on.
Right.
So, you know, elections do not stop or pretty much anything.
Yes, and this is something that I'd like to get the Elections Division's perspective on as a zoom where they've dealt with it. I have a memory of having dealt with this a while back, and I not, I don't remember all the particulars of that situation, but as I recall, it was expected that the forecast call for heavy snow on the day of a, a special election didn't end up happening, but it became apparent that it wasn't going to happen, I think, a day or so ahead. But I think the plan in that instance was to move for emergency court relief if memory serves. So that suggests that there wasn't a ready mechanism to, to, to do it unilaterally, but I, I don't know. I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to look into that to confirm.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted to bring it up just in case that does happen, remembering those wonderful days of shoveling in 2015. And if I may, Mr. Chair, just, just make a statement real quick.
Sure.
Thank you so much. So, um, I, I heard a lot of folks earlier today speak about how this is the, the will of the people and letting the people speak. And I'm all for that. I'm all for letting the people speak. I would love to see our elections have more voter turnout. Unfortunately, our current elections sit about twenty percent of those that are enrolled as registered voters. That's who comes out. And so those people that came out, they elected those town meeting members. We are an elected town body. We are not, we're not just those that, that show up. We, we have to run. We are elected and we are elected to represent our town. And by doing so, we sit through many hours at town meeting, we sit through presentations, and we learn about the, the topics that are on the, the warrant. In doing that, this past December, we voted two-thirds to approve Article One. And as Chair Zulis said, there is no other article, there is no other proposal. I have watched every planning board meeting in the last six months, and there has been no, not one proposal besides Ms. Oldfield's, and that was not voted on. But she was the only one that had tried to make another proposal. Now, it was not in line with the current law, but that was the only proposal that I saw. I have not seen anything from the planning board that said that they were trying to make a proposal that actually complied with the law. We have gone to the governor, we have gone to HLC, we have gone to all of these people and asked to try and be reclassified. We've asked for more time. We have asked for all the things, and they have come back time and time again saying, no. We are a rapid transit community. It has to be done by December thirty-first. As somebody who is currently a law student and studying the law, I find it appalling that we are taking a vote to not comply with our town or our state laws. That, to me, is very troubling. While it's the will of the people, and absolutely I will support that, it is troubling to me that we are going to be voting on something that actually puts us in jeopardy of not abiding by our state constitution, an oath I took when I became a Select Board member and town meeting member. So I hope that everybody, when they go to the polls on February thirteenth, barring no huge snowmageddon, I hope they take that into consideration as they cast their votes because it is a very serious thing that we are talking about. There is no other alternative. We are, we will be violating state law, and to me, that is critical of, of what I've been elected to do, both as a town meeting member and as a Select Board member. So thank you, Mr. Chair, for this opportunity. And I hope when folks go to the polls to vote, they vote knowing that they will be breaking the law.
Mr. Zoll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I have one quick follow-up question for Mr. Mello and, on Ms. Bradley's comments. And then I have my, a, a, a separate thought. Because I, I think it's a, it's a, it is a good question. This is New England, and you know, if you don't like the weather weight for our day, and it'll, it'll be totally different. This, and since we have been kind of picking and choosing from the town bylaws in order to make this a, a more inclusive election, which I think is the right thing to do, there is a, there is a point in the bylaws which requires a particular level of turnout. And I'm not sure that, you know, we got directly to that question as part of, of Ms. Bradley's comments. But I believe that the bylaws require us to have at least twenty percent turnout. And so if there were a weather event or some other extraordinary event that happened and we weren't at that threshold, is there a sense that we, the, the, the election is still valid? Or is it challengeable? And is, should that, should that question also be brought up as you're seeking to clarify the rules? And I think certainly, Mr. Chair, this is a sort of evidence that we probably need some input from the Bylaw Committee on this whole process because it seems to be totally out of compliance with the state law. So, Mr. Mello, I, I appreciate a thought there and that I reserve my right to make a comment after. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I, the short answer to the question of, you know, the scope of the court relief, we, we could, we could ask for the court to issue an order with respect to other logistical items beyond, you know, the, the hours during which polling locations will be open. The, you, you mentioned a bylaw. I'm aware that there is a twenty percent voter turnout thresholds contained in generalized Chapter forty-three A, Section ten. I'm not aware of any language in the town bylaws to that effect. I-
Sorry, I turned it around. I meant state bylaw, not town bylaw.
Oh, the statute, yeah.
Yes.
Right, yeah, right, right, right. So, you know, that, as I understand it, that's, that's a provision that would apply. It's, it's in the absence of a, of a charter provision. So because we're governed under Section seven, that, I, I don't believe that that would, that threshold would apply. Is it something that we could address in a proposed court order? Could we ask the court to include some, like that, to apply that twenty percent threshold? I, I, I think we could ask the court for anything. I don't know. That, like I said, that the scope of a, of a court's equitable powers is pretty broad. I don't know how likely it is that a court would, would do that. I just, I, I guess I'd, I'd have to consider that a little further.
Thank you, Mr. Mello. So just returning to my time, Mr. Chair. I just want to, I, I feel like it's important for, for, for all of us to acknowledge that this is obviously in a regular process. This is a process that's going to cost the town over sixty thousand dollars. And I'm in favor of opening this question up to the town. What I really hope happens over the next month and a half, two months, is that the folks who are going to be going to the polls in February put the same effort into learning about the law and learning about the results of non-compliance with the law as, as possible. I think that, you know, town meeting members did that. We've done that on this board. There's a reason why we had an article in, in the warrant for compliance. The easy way to fix something, if people feel something is inequitable, is to work through the zoning process. This is not, the passage of Article One did not permanently create something that can never be altered. The planning board could come back to the next town meeting with alterations to the, to that article, and we can consider them. If we, on the other hand, overturn this article, we are forfeiting our town's rights to set our own zoning, and we will be subject to court-ordered and developer-directed zoning. In effect, nothing will have been saved, and we will be in a worse position than we are now. We will be subjected to, who knows what kinds of processes, but we know that that will happen because we've seen this play out before with forty B developments. When the town failed to comply with its affordable housing requirements, we were subjected to unfriendly forty B developments. If, if you've seen one go up in your neighborhood or you're complaining about that, then this is the result of non-compliance with state law. If we don't comply, it's still going to happen. I don't want to call the folks who are against this law nimbies because frankly, yes, in your backyard, it's going to happen if you vote for this. So it's not, it's not a matter of not now, or not this way. If we want, we want, if, if the folks who are really serious about looking at and admitting this article want to do something about it, please go to the planning board and tell them this is how we would like to change it. This is how we would like to amend it. And start spending some time with Mr. Zerwinski to understand how complicated that process is. All of the requirements that go into it. We can say very easily, yes, every, every neighborhood should have an apartment building. I think that's what somebody kind of suggested earlier. Of course, that's not what the state law requires. The state law requires contiguous units, fifty percent of which are of the transit corridor. So spend, spend some time, learn about the law, learn about what non-compliance looks like because those buildings, there's going to be, if, if somebody wanted tomorrow to put up a forty B development where the salt sheds are right now, they could do it. So it's not like we're preventing something from happening, or we're, we're causing something to happen that couldn't happen. There are real, real costs to this town if we decide to ignore state law. The benefit is not that we won't have any of this developed. The cost is that it will be imposed upon us by outside forces. We will lose our voice. I'm a strong believer in the voice of Milton. That's why I'm in favor of having this election. And I'm a strong believer that the voters of Milton are going to look at the facts. They're going to make the right decision. They're going to uphold what town meeting already upheld. They're going to keep Milton compliant with state law, and they're going to continue to ensure that Milton controls its own destiny, and it's not imposed upon us by outside developers and courts. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You, Mr. Zoll, Ms. Musto?
Thank you. A couple of points that I'd like to bring up. One is, one of my colleagues was talking about that we asked for reclassification, and I think this gets brought up a lot, and just for clarity's sake, I do want to just speak on that for two seconds here. You can look at any of the letters that were sent out. It did not say reclassification. It said clarification of a classification. Those are two different asks. So I would encourage people to please go to the website and look at our letters. The other thing is, you know, there's this, this thing about the law. You know, there is the law, and then there are guidelines. And again, I think there are some discrepancies with that. I think even our own town attorney has spoken this at different points, and other attorneys have as well. So I, I don't think everything's so cut and dry as people are trying to make this. And I think we represent the people, all of the people in town, all of the groups of people in town. And I think the most important thing here is we need to be honest with people. And so if we say that we sent out a letter, we need to be honest with what that letter said. We need to be honest what's in the letter and what is not in the letters that we sent. We need to be honest about that when we did it. We asked, there was a time when we even asked for more time, none of my, well, I did, and none of the people on this board was supported. So I think, again, I think it's important that we're truthful with people and, you know, as factual. And I think that's really important because we do represent everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Musto. Let's be truthful and factual. August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Select Board wrote us, "Follows to the MBTA, the significant differences in service, infrastructure, and equipment demonstrate that the Matapan Trolley Line is not equivalent to the rapid transit lines and that its previous classification as not being rapid transit should be restored." That's what the letter said on August tenth, two thousand and twenty-three from this board to the MBTA. Ms. Bradley?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for that clarification. I, I knew that we had asked for reclassification on that. I had a technical question that I'd like to throw out to Mr. Mello because since I'm planning for snowmageddon already, I'd like to plan for how long we might be in violation. So let's say, Mr. Mello, that this goes to the voters and the voters vote to repeal Article One. Is it true that we cannot come back to this for two years after a vote by town meeting? And if so, does that mean we're out of compliance for two years and that we would lose funding for two, like for two years?
Yeah, no, that, thank you. So the question is, would, would a vote to reverse effectively town meetings approval of Article One constitute unfavorable action? Unfavorable actions of, parolings from forty A, Section five? I, I'm, the short answer is, I'm, I'm still evaluating that question. I thought, I've had the same thought. I'm not sure that there's going to be on-point precedent on the question. There, there might be. I at least initially hadn't located any, but I guess one interesting, and I don't want to get too far down, down the rabbit hole. One interesting nuance is that I think forty A, Section five uses the, the phrase unfavorable action by town meeting, or whether this would constitute that. Obviously, it's a ballot election called, and, you know, Section seven uses the phrase special town meeting. I, I, I don't, I don't want to go too far down where I am and on the question. It's something that I think I need to look at a little further. I, I, I can't offer a conclusive opinion on that, you know, as I'm sitting here.
Okay. I'm very concerned about that, Mr. Mello. So if we could get an answer on that one. I do believe that the town of Milton will vote to uphold Article One. I do believe that they, they, they voted to elect their town meeting members, and those town meeting members have, have voted and spoken on behalf of the residents of this town, all residents of this town. So I, I, I'm sure that will not be a case, but in my snowmageddon ways, I'm just curious what the consequences will be if this is a, a no vote. And what the contest, consequences will be on a statewide, you know, will this impact earmarks that come to us through, through the legislature? I'm just, the broad scope of it, the, the governor was very clear that she was looking at even more ways to to come at towns, cities and towns that did not comply with this law. So I'm just curious what extent that could be. So thank you.
And, and just to follow on, let's be honest, that this, this petition is about saying that it's okay not to follow the law, saying that it's okay to be a tax cheat and not pay your taxes. It's, it's about saying that our children, if they don't like the, the rules in school, they can just violate them and break the rules because they don't like them. You know, I think this, this petition and this, this, this now election is about a steady assault on our values and our principles that began in the summer of two thousand and fifteen. I think this is a local example of an assault on the rule of law and facts and values and principles. But I do believe in the, the residents of this town, and I do believe that this election will be a great cleansing for this attempted stain on our town by, by attempting to have it not comply with the law and not act in accordance with our democratic process and the laws, the laws enacted through our democratic process. Other comments or questions? Mr. Zoll?
This is a quick one, I promise, Mr. Chair. Thank you. I just want to acknowledge, Mr. Mello, I think, you know, you have really, I, I, I called you a couple of times with my own questions about this. I know you've been fielding questions from a number of folks. I think, you know, the, the thoughtfulness in which you're delivering your answers demonstrates the unprecedented nature of this election and of these questions. And so I, I understand why, you know, you're, you're being cautious about this because there's simply, frankly, not much precedent, if any precedent, of a town trying to have an election that would overturn or make itself violate state law. So I think, I, I just want to salute you and acknowledge. I know that sometimes people want a yes or no question. My dad's a lawyer, so I've been getting, you know, legal questions since an early age, and I perhaps have a high tolerance for them. But I just, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the diligence and the time you're putting into this on behalf of the town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions on item three? Sue, do you have everything you need?
I do.
Nick, Peter, do you have everything you need?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Item four is, item four and item five are executive sessions items. So I will move to adjourn from the open session and enter into executive session to discuss a strategy with respect to litigation filed by the town of Milton versus the Federal Aviation Administration, number twenty-two dash one fifty-two. Based on my belief, a discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board. The Select Board will not return to open session.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Zoll?
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Second, I move to enter into executive session, adjourn from open session and enter into executive session to discuss, discuss strategy with respect to threatened litigation based on my belief that this ma, the discussion of this matter in open session may have a detrimental effect on the litigation, the litigating position of the Select Board, and this is an item. This is an item- this is an item, uh, with respect to threatened litigation against the town by a town employee.
I'll second.
The select board will not return to open session.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Ms. Musto.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
I think Mr. Wells already left for the executive session.
Mr. Zol.
Yes.
Mr. Zulish, yes. Um, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn from open session. Oh, I already moved to adjourn from open session, so we haven't. So thank you, everyone. Uh, we will see you again unless we have to meet sooner. We will see you again on, I believe, Tuesday or Wednesday, January ninth. Is that it, Nick?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, January nine, Tuesday, January nine. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you again on Tuesday, January ninth. Thank you.